I don't want to cost the man extra expense towing his vehicle. If he has permission to leave it here, we'll escort him back to pick up his vehicle when he bonds out. That's what I will do for him personally because he's been cool with me.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, if it's fine with them, well...
It's really good for us. I told him as long as you're on the sidewalk...
Do you stand out here and say God bless homeless veterans? And please pray for the homeless veterans?
Yeah.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, as long as you're not asking for money and you're not trespassing, then have a good day. They requested you stand on the sidewalk.
You're personally not allowed to step forth on their property. If you do and they call back, or if you do in our presence, you will go to jail. So that's what we're at. Does that sound fair?
I understand, yep.
Again, I respect your right...
I'm already not allowed in there anyway because I'm a truck driver, so...
A citizen journalist arrives at the Talbot County GA Board of Education to file an open records request and sign up for the next public meeting. Staff feel shaken deputies swarm, and within minutes, he's cuffed for disorderly conduct, despite an investigator admitting no crime had occurred. Is filming public officials enough to land you in jail?
Listen to me. You're not being arrested. You haven't committed a crime, but you shook some people up. She's right, I could go disorderly conduct. I'm gonna go talk with the person who called and complained about your suspicious activity that made people nervous. It is a school. We have children here.
It's the Board of Education, sir.
We have children here. We're gonna protect children first. I'll step on toes over the safety of a child. Do you understand?
So you'll violate the people's rights to...
That's not violating the people's rights, that's protecting the lives of children. It is Board of Education, you're right, but there are children here.
Board of Education.
Alright, here's your ID badge.
Y'all got tons of eyes on you now.
Just hang tight, I'll be right back.
Am I still detained?
Yes, and these two are gonna, what, these three are gonna watch you while I go inside and talk to the person who called and complained.
But you said I haven't committed a crime. Why would I be detained if I haven't committed a crime?
Until I conduct and conclude my investigation, you are detained. You will be detained for a reasonable amount of time until I get to the bottom of this. Please, sir? Do you understand?
Okay, yes, sir. Talbot County Sheriff. Talbot County Sheriff's Office in Talbot County. I am detained out here at the Talbot County Board of Education for coming in, asking questions, putting in open records requests, and requesting to speak at the board meeting. And what's going on Claudette? Public interest Jenny? Hey, hey, everybody. Again, I'm detained out here in front of the Talbot County School System Board of Education Building where I was invited to come up here. Can I get your name and badge number, ma'am? Ma'am, your name and badge number, please? Your badge number, sir?
Yeah, we got my name.
Yeah, your badge number.
School employee.
No, your badge number, though.
School employee.
Okay, school employee, gotcha. So we've been removed out of a public space. Again, GT is on location at the Talbot County, Georgia Board of Education where we are live and being detained by law enforcement after the investigator said I have not committed a crime.
Everybody good? Everybody good?
What are you freaking talking about? What are you... I know, I know. I'm ready now. Come here, man.
Jenny Biller writes, what's up? Again, Board of Education where we put in a request to speak at the next public meeting as well as some open records requests. Staff felt uncomfortable, called the police, was detained, and potentially going to jail for disorderly conduct for simply showing up to a public space with a camera and asking questions of our government. Sup, Low Dimes? Kelly Flat?
Ma'am? He's allowed to record? Okay, you're under arrest for disorderly conduct.
Alright, I'm under arrest, I'm going to jail to the Talbot County.
Someone secure his camera and his phone?
Well, can I keep it in my pocket and take it with me because I'm gonna need to get phones out, phone numbers out of here.
Okay, you can leave it on record if you like, sir.
Okay, I'm being arrested, I'm going to Talbot County Jail. Can you cuff me in front? I got a bad shoulder.
Yeah, you're kind of a big fella, and you haven't been physically disrupted.
No, I'm not, man, I'm very peaceful.
Put your hands up front like you're praying. Can you put your phone in your pocket or secure it somehow?
Uh, can I hold it like this? Is that okay?
Whatever. You're being arrested for disorderly conduct. I've got several witnesses, you shook them up, you disrupted their work.
Okay.
It is a public building, but you disrupted citizens, you disrupted their work.
Okay.
I have two females that said they were scared.
Okay.
Alright, that under grounds of disorderly conduct.
Okay, misdemeanor or felony?
Misdemeanor.
Misdemeanor, so I'll be able to bond out?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, no worries. So what about my vehicle?
Chief? I don't want to cost the man extra expense towing his vehicle. If he has permission to leave it here, we'll escort him back to pick up his vehicle when he bonds out. That's what I will do for him personally because he's been cool with me.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, if it's fine with them, well, you know what? It's a public parking lot. Is your vehicle locked and secured?
Which one is your vehicle?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Is there anything of value in your car that you would be afraid would be stolen or broken into or anything like that?
No.
Okay, nothing of particular value, sentimental value, something like a $10,000 golden ring?
No.
Okay, let me double lock those clips so you don't hurt yourself.
Okay. Can you loosen this right one a little bit, just a tad if you could, please, sir?
Sure. Is that better?
Yes, sir, it is.
One click.
That's fine.
One click and I'm gonna double lock.
That's good, sir.
I'm not trying to hurt you or be rude to you.
No, I know.
I understand your First Amendment rights, but while we're practicing our First Amendment rights, if you shake people up and disrupt them and disrupt their operation, that's disorderly conduct, sir.
Okay, well, we'll, uh, I guess we'll go down there and, uh, I'll get charged, you'll bond me, or I mean, I'll bond out and then we'll, uh, we'll take it to court.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions to ask you concerning your activity. I have witnesses on his camera that made their statements, what they said that you did, how you behaved. That's what you're being arrested for, not the fact that you have a camera and you're doing a document.
Well, can I, uh, did you see anything that they, now they're out there filming me, which is fine. Um, now, did you see anything that they showed you on camera that I did?
No.
Okay, now, would you be willing to do this? Hear me out. Can I show you the footage I have on there and then my footage on my camera?
Up until now and including me, and you can post it on YouTube?
No, no, I mean, right now, because I want to save Talbot County from getting a lawsuit, a federal lawsuit. Please.
Was that the purpose of your documentation?
No, sir. My purpose of my documentation, I'm a citizen journalist.
Okay.
I investigate government, okay? I was, I got many, people has called me, emailed me, and got ahold of me to come up here and ask questions with news media. It cannot be disruptive. If I can show you my footage on there and if it matches with what they said, take me and charge me. But if it doesn't, you let me go free.
Right now, you're being arrested for the disorderly conduct, for the disrupting of people while they're in the performance of their duties.
How did I do that, though?
Because, look...
Like how? I'm just trying to say how and then we'll, you know, we'll argue in court.
Exactly.
Is it a county? Is it gonna be a state charge?
No.
Or a...
It's going to be a charge of disorderly conduct misdemeanor.
Okay.
State charge 161139, I think. I don't have all the numbers, I have to go look stuff up.
Okay.
I'm not gonna stand here and tell you that I can read every law, every SOP verbatim.
No, no, that's fine.
Any more than I would expect a preacher to quote the Bible, verbatim from Genesis to Revelation, you know? See what I'm saying?
Oh, and your name, sir? I'm so sorry.
My name, I'm gonna give you my business card.
Okay.
My name is Investigator Kurt Owsley.
Let me see, so sorry.
That is my phone number, my badge number is 914, that is your card, but you're gonna have to come with us now.
Okay. Will you get my, uh, camera, please?
You can do your footage, you can write statements.
So I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get this stuff back when I get out?
Absolutely, I'm not racing this, it's your right, it's your video.
Okay.
This is not about First Amendment.
Can you put this in? It's not about First Amendment?
No, sir.
Can you put this in my pocket, please? Alright, guys, I'm going to the Talbot County Jail. Is it the Talbot County Jail?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna go to the Talbot County Jail and, uh, we'll post bond.
Absolutely, sir, you'll have a right to post bail.
Hey, you know who I'm talking to on here? Uh, get ahold of the attorneys. Can you pull my pants up, please?
Okay, we'll get over here to the car and we'll do all that. I've already padded you down.
Oh, yeah, I don't have anything.
That was, that was a terry pat for safety conducting an investigation due to complaints. We were dispatched here, sir, we didn't see you here, we were dispatched here.
Oh, that's fine.
Chief? You've got a cage, I don't.
I can ride with you, man, it's good. I'm not gonna do any, I'm not, I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna do anything.
I would otherwise, but it's like, I'm an investigator.
Okay.
I don't transport.
So you're the arresting officer?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna be the one doing the charge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alrighty, cool.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Stephanie Jinks, get ahold of everybody. Let them know I'm going to Talbot County Jail for disorderly conduct for showing up at a school board, Board of Education, asking questions, putting in open records requests, and submitting a request to speak at the next board meeting. Can you pull my pants up, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm trying not to damage your camera, so let me...
But you, uh, you can, you can spread it out, like the thing, yeah, it'll spread out, yeah, like that.
Okay, are we good?
Yes, sir.
Back?
Yes, sir, yeah, that's it.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
You gonna hold him while you move?
Oh, thank you, sir. Oh, oh, Lordy.
You okay back there?
Yeah, I'm good, sir.
I'm going to open these and let...
Those legs will close.
Okay.
They will, yeah. They, uh, yeah, they'll close.
You got me on video? I don't want to damage your personal things, sir.
No, I know you don't.
I'm protecting your rights as good as I can.
So am I trespass from here? I can never come back here, or?
I'm gonna have a talk with my supervisor about that. I understand what you're doing.
That one goes up too, the second one down.
You're a First Amendment auditor.
And can you turn the...
I see these videos on YouTube all the time where they cartoonize the officer, they do this, they do that, and make a documentation of it. I understand how people hate police, but you have to understand when I'm dispatched and people are upset, I am expected to do something for citizens.
Okay.
And they're, they're the complaining parties.
So when someone gets upset and the other person goes to jail?
Their work was disrupted by your presence.
Okay, okay.
Radio dispatch also said you were asked to leave, you refused to leave, well, that got people upset.
I wasn't asked to leave.
Okay, well...
It's all on video.
I have witnesses and they, they, they made their statements.
Okay.
If I didn't do anything and somebody got hurt, that puts us in trouble.
Okay.
Okay.
Can y'all turn the car on? I'm like sweating back, I'm about to pass out.
Get him, get him some air, sir.
I'm fixing to, I'm about to pass out. I ain't gonna go anywhere.
Alright.
I'll follow you, sir.
Okay.
Are you good, sir? Hands and feet clear?
Yes, yes, sir.
Let me buckle you in.
Oh, I'm, I'm good, we're just going down the street.
And if there happened to be an accident and you got hurt, I would be liable for failing to buckle you in, sir. We have to follow state law, even if we're cops. You good? You okay?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Alright.
I'm good, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
T1 Central. T1 Central. Chad, we'll be transporting one white male from the school to the Talbot County Sheriff Department for 5:14. Mom began the miles to be 165, 405, 165, 405.
Oh, is this in here recorded too? The camera in here, it works in here?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. I guess I'll be able to make some phone calls from the jail?
Yes, sir, they'll let you make some phone calls.
You know about how long I'm gonna be there?
They, you know, they take your picture.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
Keep going off right away after you get through there.
Okay, yeah.
Thirty, four hours.
Okay, yeah, no worries. What's up, Tracy? What's going on, everybody? Again, uh, GT, we've been arrested in Talbot County, Talbot County, Georgia, on our way to the Talbot County Jail, uh, showing up to the Talbot County School Board of Education for putting in an open records request and requesting the right to speak at the next public meeting, the next school board meeting.
Public spaces don't immunize you from disturbing charges, but fear alone can't erase First Amendment rights. No local disorderly conduct statutes film calmly and document every request or refusal. When officials swap transparency for trespass threats due process and your footage become the strongest defense in court and the court of public opinion. Now let's watch those principles hit the pavement in Port Orange where a city's bold "Say No" slogan collides with one man's plea for homeless veterans. A lone activist parks himself on Port Orange's main drag, holding a "God Bless Homeless Veterans" sign beneath a city placard that shouts "Say No to Panhandling." Minutes later, restaurant staff demand he move police arrive to explain Port Orange's new anti-solicitation ordinance, and the sidewalk turns into a battleground over who really controls free speech.
Oh, that would be awesome, but you know what? I am not homeless myself. I like to come out in public and say God bless homeless veterans and spread this message.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
But, uh, God bless you, you're an angel, thank you. God sends angels like you guys. Thank you. You too. Hey, how are you?
Good, man.
Hi.
I know you're...
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing, the traffic.
I know you're asking for waves and hawks or whatever, but the guests are not liking it very well when they walk in the door.
What's up, man?
I'm gonna thank you. I'm Dr. Man Cusso, I want to thank you for your message.
Oh, thank you, God bless you.
Yeah, I wasn't sure she was gonna come out and talk about...
Well, everybody said they're calling the cops on you, so...
So I just introduced myself with my title and I wanted to...
Yeah, thank you, God bless you.
I actually am a psychologist.
And that's very interesting, too.
I figured, let me, you know, just in case, I just wanna let her know I'm okay.
Yeah, not everybody has a problem. God bless all, thank you. Thank you, sir. God bless you.
Hey, sir. How you doing again? We're gonna have to go pull it down.
Hey, I'm hard of hearing, can you speak up?
We're gonna have to go pull it down that way across the street, can't do that right there.
Uh, I politely disagree with you, I'm gonna stay right here.
I know, but when you're talking to the guests, they're complaining about a guy talking to them.
Too bad.
I'm gonna follow up.
Alright. Afternoon, sir, how are you?
Hey, really?
I'm good, how are you?
They actually believe?
Uh, they did, yeah.
You're not on their way.
Yeah. I'm standing out here on the sidewalk, so...
They're not asking for money?
Uh, I'd rather not answer that, but I am soliciting, so...
You can't, here, in Port Orange at least.
You can't ask for money in Port Orange?
No.
Okay, I mean, I'm soliciting, so I'll be honest with you about that.
Yeah, you can't in Port Orange. It's nothing like that, it's like they have, I don't remember the exact thing, it's within certain meters of an intersection.
Uh-huh.
And it's set up so it covers the entirety of Port Orange.
Oh, okay. Well, but, uh, do you recognize me? Do you know who I am or anything?
No.
Okay. Soliciting is, is free speech. It's protected free speech.
Yeah, that's why I asked, if you're asking for something...
Yeah.
One thing, if you're just talking to people...
Yeah.
Totally.
Alright.
Yeah, if you're just talking to them, just talking. Um, but yeah, we're on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm not on their property.
As long as you stay off their property, that's it.
Okay. My name is Jeff, by the way.
Officer Langer.
Langer, L-A-N-G-E-R, okay.
Uh, they do want you trespassed?
Why? I mean, I know, I know, but why do they want me trespassed?
It's a business, they have the right to do that.
Yeah.
So even if you're not on their property, they still just, I guess they just don't want you to come on their property.
Oh, alright. That's a shame.
Do you have your driver's license on you, by chance?
I do, but I'd rather not get my ID or anything like that.
Alright, um, alright, so I'm just letting you know, if they call back, say you're on their property.
Alright.
If something else, you're on the sidewalk, you're on the sidewalk.
Okay, yeah, I have no intention to go on their property if they're gonna trespass me, that's for sure, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and that's why, when I pulled up and I saw you over here, I'm like, he's not trespassing.
Yeah.
I will go in and make sure that it is clear to them as well.
Alright.
You have a good day.
Alright, you too, God bless you, stay safe.
What you doing? Uh, yeah, I talked to them, they said you're asking for money. I said, do you have any proof of that? They said yes, and then they showed me a picture of their phone, so they have money. Um, yeah, as long as you're not bothering their business, that's really good for us. I told them as long as you're on the sidewalk...
Do you stand out here and say God bless homeless veterans? And please pray for the homeless veterans? That's what I'm doing?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, as long as you're not asking for money and you're not trespassing, then have a good day. They, they requested you stand on the other side of the sign. I told them you're on the sidewalk, that's your right.
Alright, I'm not gonna challenge you on the money part of it because it is a civil right to be able to ask for money, it's, it's a...
As I already told you, we have the, uh, the guidelines at Port Orange for taking, or for handling.
I always say Port Orange has an ordinance, an laws out or whatever, but the courts have ruled that handling against a charitable appeal for alms or for funds, and that is protected speech. So any kind of ordinance would be unconstitutional, and I'll probably have to challenge that, I'm not gonna do that here today.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna bother you about it either.
You're being so nice, so, uh, but, uh, that, that is, would be an unconstitutional ordinance.
I mean...
Isn't it Southern Legal Counsel that sued Daytona and they put a order out in the courts saying you can't enforce this anymore?
Yeah, they put a, yeah.
I personally never enforced it, I just know it's in our god...
But you saw, I saw Velez the other day doing the same thing, and he wrote a woman a ticket for standing there and giving money. Uh, can I have 10 bucks?
No.
Why not?
I'm not giving you 10 bucks.
Or 20?
I actually don't have any money, I don't need to give you anything.
You got Apple Pay?
Nope.
Why not?
Why would I?
Are you gonna write me a ticket for soliciting money from me?
No, I told you I'm not going to.
So that's the problem, like Velez did that the other day, he wrote a woman a $150 ticket or something like that, I walked up and gave her money, uh, I'm gonna find out what it is, I'm gonna refer her to Southern Legal Counsel and hopefully...
Yeah, it's a, it's a discretion thing more than anything.
Yeah.
It's not something I follow through. If, if somebody's asking for money and they're not being obnoxious or any like, then you're asking for money, I understand.
But does the ordinance also prohibit giving money as well?
Honestly, I don't know the clarity of it, I don't see, I don't know. I would read it, if you want, I can get a copy for you if you're gonna be here, I'll look into it.
That's okay, I'll look at it, I'll look at it. Where are you recording with your...
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask that, like, when you say that, um, you don't enforce it, some other people do, but...
It's discretion, I have that option to enforce things if I wish, I don't want to, so I don't, if it was something more serious, it all comes down to my choice as a police officer, as I'm sure you're aware of your time as a police officer, you know what you can and cannot enforce, and you have that choice.
When, uh, when people make a false report to you to, to affect laws or affect something on someone else, like lying and saying that he's asking for money, do you ever charge them with anything?
No.
Why not?
No, I asked, because I'm not gonna charge him, I'm not gonna bother them about it either. But I do have stuff pending, I do have to go, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'd love to talk to you guys all day, I don't have that time right now, but, uh, yeah, as long as you're not bothering them, have a good day. Mark, it's always nice to see you, you have a good day as well.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask for some money here when I need to use, because tired of it.
One, one second. Yeah, I'm code for, sorry.
I just want to clarify, am I trespassing?
Um, so since I gave you that verbal warning, if you go on, it becomes a, it would become a bit more, but you didn't identify yourself because you're right, you're on the sidewalk, I didn't observe you trespassing.
Okay, but they don't want me on there.
They do not want you on their property.
What if we go to dinner tonight, is that gonna be something that...
They have the right to refuse service if he walks in, and if he's in, then they can say, hey, we'd like him trespassed?
Yeah, no, absolutely, while you're walking...
I'm down here.
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna hold you up for pending calls.
I appreciate it.
Um, like I said, I was over there watching him the whole entire time and seeing that he never asked for money. As, as I already told you, we have the, uh, the guidelines at Port Orange for panhandling, it's, or for panhandling.
Obviously, Port Orange has a, an ordinance, an laws that, or whatever, but the, uh, the courts have ruled that panhandling is a charitable appeal for alms or for funds, and that is protected speech, so any kind of ordinance would be unconstitutional, but I probably have to challenge that, I'm not gonna do that here today.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna bother you about it either.
You're being so nice, so, uh, but, uh, that, that is, would be an unconstitutional ordinance.
I mean.
Isn't it Southern Legal Counsel that sued Daytona and they put a order out in the courts saying you can't enforce this anymore?
Yeah, they put a, yeah.
I personally never enforced it, I just know it's in our guidelines.
But you saw, I saw Velez the other day doing the same thing, and he wrote a woman a ticket for standing there and gave him money, uh, can I have ten bucks? Why not?
I'm not giving you ten bucks.
Well, twenty?
I actually don't have any money, I don't need to give you.
You got Apple Pay?
Nope.
Why not?
Why would I?
Are you gonna write me a ticket for soliciting money from here?
No, I told you, I'm not going to.
So that's the problem, like Velez did that the other day, he wrote a woman a hundred and fifty dollar ticket or something like that, I walked up and gave her money. Uh, I'm gonna find out what it is, I'm gonna refer her to Southern Legal Counsel, and hopefully.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a discretion thing more than anything.
Yeah.
It's not something I follow through, it's, if somebody's asking for money and they're not being cautious or any leak, like, then you're asking for money, I understand.
But does the ordinance also prohibit giving money to people?
Honestly, I don't know the clarity of it, I don't see, I don't know.
Yeah.
I would read it, if you want, I can get a copy for you, if you can be here, I'll look into it.
That's okay, I'll look at it, I'll look at it. Were you recording me on the.
Yeah, yeah.
And I was gonna, I was gonna ask that, like, when you say that, um, you don't enforce it, some other people do, but.
It's discretion, I have that option to enforce things if I wish, I don't want to, so I don't, I feel it's something more serious. It all comes down to my choice as a police officer, as I'm sure you're aware of your time as a police officer, you know what you can and cannot enforce, and you have their choice.
When, uh, when people make a false report to you to, to affect laws or affect something on someone else, like lying and saying that he's asking for money, do you ever charge them with anything?
No.
Why not?
No, I asked, because I'm not gonna charge him, I'm not gonna bother them about it either. But I do have stuff pending, I do have to go, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'd love to talk to you guys all day, I don't have that time right now, but, uh, yeah, as long as you don't bother them, have a good day. Mark's always nice to see you, you have a good day as well.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask for some money here when he leaves, cause tired of it.
One, one second. Yeah, I'm going for, sorry.
I just want to clarify, am I trespassing?
Um, so since I gave you that verbal warning, if you go on, it would become something, it would become something more. But you didn't identify yourself, which is your right, you're on the sidewalk, I didn't observe you trespassing.
Okay, but they don't want me on there.
They do not want you on their property.
What if we go to dinner tonight, is that gonna be something that?
They have the right to refuse service if he walks in, and if he's in, then they can say, hey, we'd like him trespassed?
Yeah, no, no, absolutely, while you're walking.
I'm down here.
I don't wanna hold you up for pending calls.
I appreciate it.
Um, like I said, I was over there watching him the whole entire time, and seeing, and he never asked for money.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I didn't bother him too much about it.
So he, 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 they didn't trespass him, they didn't say.
So he refused to identify himself, I, and since he was no longer committing, if he ever did, I was gonna press him on anything because of that.
He didn't have to identify himself.
Uh, for trespass, do you know you don't have to identify yourself?
Uh, I generally try to, because it's.
No, no, like, like for me here, if the owner comes out of this business, I was just gonna do an A, if the owner comes out of this place here and says, hey, I don't want this guy here, and I'm like, okay, I'll leave, and he's like, no, I want him trespassed, I want him fully trespassed, I want a written trespass on him, and I walk off there and go down the sidewalk, uh, can you stop me?
I've been told not.
Yeah, it's a civil issue, because trespass, uh, the warning is a civil issue, trespass after warning is then the crime.
Yeah, that's, and that's why, like I told them, they don't want you there, they understand.
Yeah, we were planning on going to eat there.
It's unfortunate. Yeah.
That's sad.
I know.
That's alright, it's their business, I mean, they got.
Yeah, and that's why, and that's why I explained, it's if, it's up to them, if they don't want him there, that's their option, as, and I've explained it to more people than I can count. Uh, but why, but he trespassed.
Yeah.
It's a private building, if they don't want you there, there's not much more I can do except follow what they're requesting.
That makes sense.
Nice chat with you.
You too.
Langer or Langer?
Langer.
Langer, alright, I'll see you later, I gotta get out of this one, go home, see ya.
Ordinances may ban panhandling, but they can't erase core First Amendment rights. Know the code film politely, and remember refusal to leave private property brings trespass, yet speech on a public sidewalk stays protected. When local rules collide with constitutional law calm persistence, and a rolling camera becomes the surest path to real reform. Now let's wheel that hard-won wisdom into Florida's biggest new pit stop, where a lone protest sign will test whether Buck E's no truck policy can toe away free speech. At Florida's New World Commerce Parkway, Buck E's a lone protester hoists a homemade sign that reads, "Welcome Truckers." Just don't park here. Staff dial nine hundred and eleven deputies arrive, and free speech rights clash with a private parking lot policy that bans eighteen-wheelers. Will the protests stay curbside, or roll straight into a trespass citation?
Where's this at, I'm trying to sound. Hi. How you doing? You the manager?
Have a great time.
Sam?
Yeah.
Um, what's going on here?
He's protesting because we don't allow truck drivers on the lot.
Oh, okay.
I just want him off the property.
Um, would you like your trespass, or, okay, you have your license on you?
Yeah.
And then what's a good phone number for you?
Uh, it's gonna be.
When, did he show up here?
Uh, I, I can't really give you a good, I mean, I could ask.
Okay. It's okay. Here you go.
Hold on, do you notice him, pal?
That's been that long, probably six, fifteen.
Okay.
Think I can handle it from here, maybe recording us, good. Go back in the store. No? Alright, thank you guys.
Hey.
Hey.
How you doing?
This guy just, the sign?
Yep, he's just got a sign.
This is my life, man.
Um, okay, so what we got so far? Well, he's the manager who wants him trespassed.
Okay.
I mean, you know, that's, that's pretty much it for me. I'm just gonna go get his info and then, uh, I'm not sure what, uh, Burns wants to do, but I don't wanna.
Is he big ID yet?
I don't wanna step on toes, well, he was just talking to me, I don't know.
Did he collect your information?
No.
The other deputy?
No.
Is it alright if I get your info, what's your name?
Yeah, my name is Jeff.
Jeff, how you doing?
Yeah, man.
What's going on?
So you guys know who I am?
No, I don't know who you are.
Oh, you don't?
No.
What's your last name? Uh, I'm not gonna give my last name or anything like that, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, okay, no, you're good.
I never.
You're good.
I'm Deputy Millie Alex, Jeff.
Deputy Carroll, nice to meet you.
Me too.
Alright, Jeff, so obviously you're allowed to assemble.
Hundred percent.
We're not saying you can't, but the thing is.
Does the other side, does the other side say the same thing?
No, the other side, that's why I grin, that's a little.
Well, see, what I did is I was on the kitchen counter writing this, and then my daughter was like, wouldn't it be funnier if you said that? And I said, okay, so I'll come out here and say this, but the deputy over there shaved it or bald it. The first one that got here, he's already told me that I'm gonna go to jail, if my whole sign says F-buggers.
So the only possibility is with that is if it's, if it disrupts someone's peace, it falls under the thing of disorderly, but like I said, you have, as far as we know right now, for what we've just got here, you have the right to assemble.
Yeah.
You just do not have the right to be on their property.
Yeah, that I'm not gonna go on.
Yeah, so this is not, this is currently, um, county.
Yeah.
We're not trespassing, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
But I'm just letting you know, obviously we don't have your information, so we're only going by that your person is possible, Jeff.
Jeff.
But that you're wearing, like, I can only recognize you, so this is just me letting you know you are trespassing, so if you do come.
They are trespassing.
Yeah, yeah, you're not allowed.
The manager of Buckey's wants you trespassed.
You're personally not allowed to step foot on their property, if you do, and they call back, or if you do in our presence, you will go to jail, so that's, that's what we're at.
Alright.
Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, I respect your right.
I'm already not allowed in there anyway, cause I'm a truck driver, so that's why I'm doing this.
You drive trucks?
Yeah.
Like all over, or just local?
Southeast.
What kind of truck?
Like a sleeper? No, it's not a sleeper, it's a decal, just recently retired.
Nice, congrats.
But the, thank you, thank you. The, the thing is, is they put up all these signs all over St. John's County, or all over Florida, wherever they have Buckey's and other states. Welcome to Buckey's, come on in to Buckey's, Buckey's is awesome, come here and spend money.
Yeah.
If you're a truck driver, get off the highway, and you've got a seventy-foot wide rig, so come all the way up here, and you don't see anything that says no trucks, and then you got that right there.
Yeah, I, I guess it's a little, it's a little. It's a little small.
The gas that's in here came from the truck, the food that came in here came from the truck.
Yeah, so how, how are.
Put signs up on their, on their signs, they already got up at there to say, please, no trucks allowed, just to let us know ahead of time, it would be better, but.
You have to understand, it's up to them.
Yeah, it's their, to them, it's their private company.
It's private commerce.
Yeah.
Uh, it is kinda a little ironic that you can have a truck to deliver it, but not to park, but that's not, that's not for me to say if it's right or wrong, it's just me to be here to actually request the Buckey's, and at this point, they just don't want you to step foot on their property.
Hey, how you doing?
Cause if you do, it's up to them to pursue the charges and have it.
Yeah.
I understand, so as long as your foot doesn't cross the threshold of what they're talking about.
Crazy, I didn't know that Buckey's doesn't let trucks here.
What's that?
I said, I didn't know that Buckey's doesn't allow trucks here, I've never been to Buckey's.
I didn't know either.
I don't mess around with Buckey's.
I love Buckey's, but, yeah, I don't have a truck, so.
Yeah.
I never experienced that.
Yeah, hundred percent, right there with you. But, yeah, a little weird, right?
Like, trucks can deliver here, but not, not park here.
Cause it takes a truck to deliver the gas, that's it.
Yeah.
Takes trucks to deliver the food.
Yeah.
The products that they have in here, you know? I think the man is probably like, uh, too much of a liability.
I can't, I mean, the parking lots are huge, um, weird. It's a little weird. Uh, him?
He said his name is Jeff, I'm not, I'm not from here, I'm, I'm new, so, I'm not even from this state. But, uh, I'm, I'm learning.
Is that your vehicle owner?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, it's on the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yep, one second.